Call a meeting to order. In accordance with 940 CMR 2910, remote participation, adopted by the Greater Lowell Technical School Committee April 17th, 2014. Chairman O'Hair will be participating at tonight's meeting remotely. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted. I'll rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Roll call.
Mr. Gigi?
Here.
Mr. Getchere?
Yeah.
Mr. Sheen?
Yeah.
Mr. Bahu? Mr. O'Hair?
Is there anyone here?
Are you here, George?
Yeah.
He's here.
Mr. Tatsias? Mr. Lemay?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes.
Mr. Lemay, here.
Mr. Moran?
Yeah.
Public appearance. We're gonna be suspending the public appearance portion and going right into the meeting. School Committee Communications? Nope. Report a student representative? Nope. I need approval of the minutes for the August 20th meeting.
So moved, Mr. Chairman? Second.
It's that kind of by Mr. Tatsias.
Mr. Gigi?
Yes.
Mr. Getchere?
Yes.
Mr. Sheen?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hair?
Mr. O'Hair? Mr. O'Hair?
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yeah.
One, two, three, four.
Okay. Reported the treasurer? Moved away with the reading, someone?
Moved, moved, moved. Second.
Mr. Gigi?
Yes.
Mr. Getchere?
Yes.
Mr. Sheen?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hair? Nope, he's, he dropped off. Mr. Tatsias?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes. Need a motion to approve the expenditures. Three million, two hundred and three thousand, six hundred and seventeen dollars and fifty-nine cents.
All moved. Second.
Mr. Gigi?
Yes.
Mr. Getchere?
Yes.
Mr. Sheen?
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hair?
Mr. O'Hair? Mr. O'Hair?
Mr. O'Hair?
Is there a chance that we can move that up closer to you, Paul, so that it might come in?
I don't know. Mr. Knight? Can that be moved closer to me? Maybe he's not hearing. Mr. O'Hair? Mr. O'Hair? Reported General Counsel? There's none?
There is.
Superintendent's report. I'll turn the meeting over to the Superintendent.
Good evening, everyone. Before I begin my report, I just wanna say that today is our third day of in-person learning, and things seem to be going smoothly. I'll take this off, excuse me. Things seem to be going smoothly. We, we are having some glitches with our connectivity, but our technology department is working, uh, working aggressively to resolve those issues. Other than that, the students are happy, they're back, and they're really following our new health and safety protocols. So we're appreciative of that and appreciative of the staff. And tomorrow will be our fourth day, and our last group of students for their first in-person learning day. So we're excited about that. So I just wanted to give you a brief update on our return to school, which seems to be going smoothly. The first item on my agenda is I would like to inform the committee that we recently were notified by Governor Baker's office that Greater Lowell Technical High School has been awarded a Remote Learning Technology Essentials Grant of four hundred and sixty-five, four hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. The funding was granted to ensure every student has access to technology for use in remote learning environments during the 2021 school year. So, uh, so that's a great grant for us to have, and we are definitely utilizing those funds.
I poked around on the Department of Education website. This was a competitive grant, it kinda, it's a big thing. If you look at the other vocational schools around us, they didn't get this money. They got forty thousand, I think, the show over got somewhere in forty. Greater Lawrence, Charstein didn't get anything. Like, the, the real schools that beat us were like Lowell, Lawrence, Brock. This is a pretty good score for us, it's, it's great job, everybody here.
Yeah, I, I think, uh, I'd like to say thank you to our grants writer, Cheryl Bomo, who worked with Mr. Knight aggressively to get right on this grant, and we're grateful for that, so yes. The next item on the agenda, I'm asking for the committee's approval to revise the fall reopening plan and to reflect recent changes regarding the Cooperative Education Program. As I said when we initially presented this plan, that because things are constantly changing, we'll be updating the plan. So tonight, due to recent changes in co-op, I'd like to remove the sentence that states "Students will not be placed in nursing home facilities for at least the first two months of school", as well as the addition of the safeguards. So students are currently allowed to be placed in nursing homes and other medical facilities if they follow the following protocols, and I think those protocols were listed in your packet. If you have any questions regarding those protocols, I'm more than happy to answer them, as well as the addition to early childhood education, students could also go out now, as long as the facilities that employ these students follow the protocols that were outlined, that were going to outline in our reopening plan. Does anyone have any questions in regards to those protocols? You should've received them in your packet.
I'd just like to clarify that it kinda sounds like we're not sending kids to nursing homes, so...
So...
For the public that's listening, that they're going on co-op in a, in a nursing home?
Correct. So just to, just to clarify that, these changes were based on the changes in our reopening plan under the Cooperative Education Program area, which was on page 21. So, we are placing students out in nursing homes and medical facilities as part of our Cooperative Education Program, if those, if those facilities follow the, the protocols that were provided in your packet. I can, I can state them publicly if you would like, but they will be outlined in our reopening plan on page 21, and that reopening plan will be updated and placed on our website as well. So every, so it will be there for the public to, to view. Any questions regarding those changes to co-op for our health and medical students, as well, as well as our early childhood education students?
No, it's just long as we're diligent in fault, making sure that, I'm fine with it, as long as we're diligent.
We're very aware of it, and we're, we're, uh, our Cooperative Education Coordinator is working closely with employers to, to ensure that they follow the COVID-19 protocols. Just a little update on co-op. Currently, we have 6.5% of our seniors out on co-op. It's the third day of school. She's also working to try to get more individuals out on co-op, but 6.5% of our seniors are out on co-op currently. The next item on the agenda is our sanitizing swab. Oh, actually, I need an approval to revise the reopening plan to add those revisions under Cooperative Education on page 21.
Motion to approve. Second.
Mr. Gigi?
Yes.
Mr. Getchere?
Yes.
Mr. Sheen?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hair?
Mr. O'Hair?
Mr. Tatsias?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
The next item on the agenda is an update regarding the sanitizing swabs. So I'd like to ask our Director of Facilities, Mr. Mark Byrne, to come up and speak to, to you all about the sampling.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
I have a couple of, um, I used to have an executive summary of the proposal that was sent to myself and the Superintendent. If I could just hand, hand that out to each and every one of the school committee members, huh? And that's Curtis, and this is our boss. I have extra copies here.
Thank you.
Do you need one, Jill? So, the Superintendent has asked me to speak a little about the proposal that was sent to both her and I in regards to the swab sampling. And the company that we went out to chose was Cash and Associates. And they actually did the air quality testing throughout our whole construction project, working with Consigly and ourselves. We've used them for a number of things. We've had excellent, you know, benefits from them. They've helped us through the whole process, through the construction project with Consigly and our own staff. And they were very comfortable, we're very comfortable with them, and they were very professional. With that being said, this proposal that was sent here includes thirty areas of sampling, and it'd be done twice a month, or depending on what the committee wants us to do. The sampling locations would include areas as classrooms, as you can see, stairwells, bathrooms, hallways, cafeterias, kitchens, and common areas, and any other miscellaneous areas that we need to. These would be different areas each week or month, or however it was decided by the committee. The swab samples would be taken from high-touch surfaces, doorknobs, faucet handles, desk keyboards, handrails, stairwell areas. And then, um, those areas would be in thirty swabs. And then they'd be bundled into five areas to six, which, that would, that would take the test. The turnaround for the swab testing would be, I think, a couple of days before we'd see the actual results. So if they came in on a Wednesday night, a Wednesday, late, a Wednesday afternoon, after we've done some testing, or, or...
After the deep clean?
Deep cleaning and sanitizing, then at that point, we would, um, we would allow them to do some samples, like in, you know, so many areas. And they would do it in various areas each month, or whatever you choose. The samples would be analyzed by an independent testing area, and part of the, um, you know, they'd be testing for, you know, the COVID and the SAVs, and, um, and the laboratory results will come back to us. And as soon as they do, I would give them to the Superintendent to share with the, the school committee.
So just to be clear, the results would come back either infectious or non-infectious? It, it won't be a detection of COVID-19, just to be clear. It would just be a detection of some sort of bacteria.
The cost, um, right now is, um, for the thirty samples would be, every, every round that we do is, is twenty-six hundred dollars.
So fifty-two hundred a month?
If you, if you go that route, or if, depending on, you know, whatever route you, you wanted to go. If you only wanted to do it once a month, then it's twenty-six hundred.
So if they did it, is it like getting a swab?
I think, I think what they do is they go to the area that's clean, they, they take the swab, and they put it right into the, um, into their, their box or something. So that nothing else is being touched by it. Kind of, um, you know, similar to when they were testing and swabbing on the asbestos, on the abatement that we went through.
And does that have a ratio or a rating? Like, I'm sure for all the cleaning that, you know, your team has done, that you're bound to find some bacteria, you know what I mean?
I, I don't know that. I'm sure, well, it could, I, I, it's, it's an unknown, you know, until they take the swabs.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman? Black, do we, have you checked with any county parts, with any other districts as to what they might be doing?
No, I did not.
Mr. Sheen?
But I do know that I did talk to Cash and Associates, and they've done a few things, you know, quick to, to, uh, but they weren't gonna do, they weren't gonna be doing an ongoing thing. I was just, I think it was before school, school openings were going on. But I don't believe it was gonna be carried on, to my knowledge, based on talking to Zach, Zachary Keefe, who was gonna be our, our person that would support us.
First of all, thank you and your entire staff, because I'm sure this hasn't been easy. And everything that we hear, you guys are doing a fantastic job. So, you know, personally, thank you. And say thank you to your entire crew. That's a lot of money. That's my own personal opinion. You know, I'm sure that Mr. Byrne and his entire staff are gonna go above and beyond to make sure that this school is sanitized in every which way possible that they can do, but it's a lot of money every month. Again, thank you and your staff.
Thank you for letting us, I thank you and the Superintendent for allowing us to, giving us the tools to work with, though. So, thank you, guys.
I mean, if you think, just to add to that, there's a lot of school districts in the news. Greater Lowell Tech's not one of them. Like, your staff, your administration, and everything. I mean, it's really, it's kudos to everybody that, um, that is in here day in and day out.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Tatsias?
If, if they do the testing and they end up with a positive result somewhere, what's the protocol then?
I, I would, um, we would follow all the protocols, the health protocols that we have currently. We would obviously probably close that area down and go in and re-sanitize it and clean it. So we wouldn't, we wouldn't allow anybody to go into that area. I'm assuming until we, we're gonna get the results back, you know, twenty-four hours later, or forty-eight hours. Soon as we get them, as soon as we get those results, we'll act on them.
Yeah.
Based on the guidelines, the soup, we went through last week, based on what the Superintendent has said that teachers are doing for individual classrooms versus what you do on a Wednesday versus what's done elsewhere?
Just to be clear, Mr. Lemay, they're doing a deep clean on a Wednesday as well as on the weekend?
On a Saturday, too?
On a Saturday.
Okay, it is, includes a, a weekend, too, huh?
Correct.
So we're, we're being able to take, take care of the two, the, uh, the COVIDs in on Monday, so we cover that on Saturday. And then on Tuesday, after Tuesday, you know, the kids get out, and we, we do a deep clean on Tuesday night, and then we, we go in and start sanitizing Wednesday morning. Like, this, this Wednesday, we sanitize, and we were probably close to maybe sixty, sixty-five percent of the school done during the day shift on Wednesday, on Wednesday. And then the other thirty, forty percent was done on second shift. And so we completed it last night around, about eight o'clock, talking to the supervisor. So, it's, it's pretty extensive. We have, we have seven pieces of, um, um, equipment. We have, um, very, we have a couple of backpacks. We have two 360s that are used by JetBlue and all major corporations. We have two of those, and then we also have two other machines that are, um, they're on a cot that we can go in and out of rooms, four or five classrooms, because the extension of the cord that, the, the trigger allows us, the sprayer, allows us to go in about a hundred feet. So we're going in and out of classrooms with that. So, we have, we have, we have all the tools to work with. We were very fortunate to get them, because we jumped on it early. Uh, we have the chemicals to work with, and they're safe. Our, our guys wear goggles and glasses when they're doing it, to be safe. And, um, so, and they're pretty, they're pretty impressed. They're happy with the stuff. It's very user-friendly, and, um, and they've, they've been very responsive. And everybody in our staff knows how to, knows how to use it. They've all been trained on it, it's pretty, pretty easy, but they all know how to use it. So we rotate different people using it, so not the same people are doing it. But they know their areas, um, and, and we do it, um, we're cleaning the cafeteria at lunches, and we only have probably a short timeframe to do it, and we're still, in some areas, we're still san, we have a backpack that we're sanitizing if we have enough time, because the, the dry time is like fifteen to twenty seconds before the kids sit down. So, um, so it's, it's, it's been going pretty good.
What are your thoughts regarding the swab testing?
Well, I mean, I mean, I, I wanna be honest with you. I, I believe, you know, and I, I thank all the compliments that come our way from, about our staff, but we are a pretty good staff. I think our staff has done a pretty good job. They know how important and how, you know, conscientious it is to make sure this school's clean, not only today, but in the past, but more so today, because of the virus. And so, they're, they're, you know, if they maybe were said they're gonna miss something, you know, a couple, you know, say, a year and a half ago, or two years ago, they're not doing it, they're not missing it anymore. They're just, I think they're, they're, they're tying everything together. They know how important it is, they know how important staff is and students here. And I think, I think that they do a good job.
They know it's important that they don't get sick either, you know, you know what I mean?
Yeah, so, I mean, I think they do a good job. I think that, um, I, I think it, money, we could spend money elsewhere, my opinion, but I don't wanna step on someone's personal opinion on something that has it, but I, I just have a lot of confidence in our staff and, and the support that I get from, you know, the Superintendent and Mike and, and you people. So I think that you've given us the tools to work with. We have the manpower to keep it going. I think we're doing a pretty good job cleaning. I, I believe that the teachers and, and our, and our staff that is, that are supporting our students around here are making sure that they're, they're cleaning, they're, they're, they're wiping their hands, they're washing their hands, they're doing all the health protocols and safety protocols that were put in place by, you know, um, the, the teachers, the administrators, and the staff that we put it together, and, and yourself. So, that's my, my opinion. But...
Just to kinda follow up. Joe, what are your thoughts regarding, as the teachers, and are they, would they be more comfortable if we did any type of sampling? Or they haven't expressed any concern about that particular issue to you personally?
At this time, that has not been...
Okay, and then my other thought is, if, right now, Tingsboro was in the news, and it sounds like it might've been one household that kinda skewed the numbers, but would it be better to kinda table this? Um, and then if we start to see reds and other higher numbers, then we initiate some sampling at that time?
I, I would, I would agree with that, yes.
And that kinda, you know, placates spending a great deal of money when we may not need to do it. I think the staff's doing a pretty good job. It's something that, if it becomes more concerning in the community, we can kind of, you know, address it. We've done the homework on it, we can implement it fairly quickly, right? Um, so we have all of the tools to go forward in a fairly timely manner required.
I mean, we also probably could go, I mean, we, we have, we benchmark thirty samples. We could, we could cut it down to fifteen samples and do a quick, quick thing, and maybe a quick turnaround to give us an idea at, once you, um, you know, if we had to go that route. But I think it's, it's good to table it and come back at it and revisit it in the future. And, and we have it in place, we have, we have Cash, and I can contact him. We can make sure that they're on retainer, and, um, not, not, we don't have to pay them, but we, they, they know, they're a good customer of ours, and likewise. So they're gonna, they're gonna turn, and they're gonna come to us. And, and, and it's not gonna be hard to get them.
From what, from what I'm gathering, fifty-two hundred's a lot of money. If we're gonna spend that money, I'd rather give it to Mark and say, what can you do? And make this place safer. I think he's as good as swabbing for a sample. I think his team's that good. I think they, we wouldn't be in this position right now we're in if it wasn't for Mark and the team and the, the administration. So if we're gonna spend the fifty-two hundred, I'd rather say to Mark, you get an extra fifty-two hundred every month. Go, let's see what you can come up with. That's my take on it, I think fifty-two hundred's a lot for a swab, especially if they can't tell us we have COVID, they're just saying we have bacteria. That, to me, that doesn't cut it enough for me.
Some infectious bacteria.
Yeah, it, it, we don't even know what it is. It might, it could be anything, you know what I mean? Not, doesn't mean it's COVID. It doesn't mean the reason we're sitting in this position.
Like I said, bacteria anyway.
Right. I, I mean, it could be, it could be chicken bacteria, I don't know, I'm just throwing something out.
Be the flu?
Right, anything. If, if we're gonna spend fifty-two hundred, we have that money sitting there, I, I'd rather give it to them and say, Mark, here's fifty-two hundred a month, go, do your thing. I mean, if, if it's doing an extra deep clean on a Sunday, and we use that money for the overtime, or whatever, I don't know what you'd come up with, that the ball would be in your court then. But I just think that's a lot of money to do something like this where they can't tell us for fact what it is. That's, that's my take.
The other thing is, we, we've been in constant contact with the Superintendent's office and the nurse's office and stuff like that. So if there's anybody that was even, even sick or had a headache or some, like, the other day, there was someone that had just had a headache and they didn't feel well. The nurse talked to us, they were, they were in two separate areas. When the bathroom area cleared, we shut it down just for maybe ten, fifteen minutes. We went in and sanitized it real quick and, and took care of it. They didn't have anything, but we were taking the precautions, and that was one of the, the nurses that was being proactive about it. There was no problems, there was no, no one got sick, or no one threw up, but those are things that, we've had that happen the last two or three times. And I know that we go in and clean the nurse's office and sanitize them every night. And we have three areas, good-sized areas. Some of the nurse's areas are decent sized, so we sanitize and clean them every, thoroughly and sanitize them every night.
The custodial staff has also been fully trained on how to deal with an incident of someone who exhibited symptoms. If we needed to clean an area, they're fully aware of how that area needs to be cleaned and the safety precautions that they need to take for themselves to clean that area.
Right, and we have all the proper PPE equipment for...
Necessary to do that.
Necessary to do it, not only for our staff, but for every administrator in the building that the Superintendent and Mike directed that we have, they have, each have a...
A kit, like a safety kit.
A kit in, in their office.
Mr. Byrne, um, you know, any of us having not been in the building, what, what I expect to see if I walked into a shop or a classroom? What preventative measures are in place? Are the desks separated by plexiglass? Is the teacher separated by plexiglass? In the shop areas?
Most teachers, most teachers are separated with some plexiglass. Um, the, 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 the chairs are six feet apart. The shops are set up that, you know, they're broken down in different segments that they're spaced out, uh, pro, you know, safe. Um, we have all kinds of hand sanitizers, wipes. Uh, we gave every teacher a kit in here that consisted of paper towels, hand sanitizers, spray, masks, fifty, a box of fifty masks, shields, and, um, and then they always, and they always had a hand sanitizer on, on their wall, in there. So, I mean, that's, that's what we, that's what most classrooms are in. Um, they, they have all kinds of directive signage in entering their classroom or on, in their classroom to make sure that the students and staff are sanitizing their hands as they enter and exit the room. There are also, there's protocols in place that says that if you, if you don't feel well, you immediately contact, you know, your, the teacher or a nurse right away. And, you know, so there's all kinds of information that teachers have in, on them. They, they've gone through the safety training, as well as every, every staff member, and I believe in the building, that went through that training, with, under the direction of Mike and Jill and Kathy Tanny. Does that answer your question, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, no, I just didn't know if there were plexiglass.
There's some shields in, in some of the shops, like, I apologize, cosmetology, you know, they're, they're separated by some, some plex, some dividers and that. In, in some areas, I know that, and, and just to touch base, Mike Knight's been a very, a good partner with me. Uh, he, he's been able to help me assist, get a lot of the product in here, with a lot of, making sure that we had the money and, and just go get it. And so we were able to get that, a lot of our shields in here. We've, we've put over, up three hundred shields on each teacher's desk.
Plexiglass shields.
Plexiglass shields. And, and I know that we've bought, like, all... And, and I know that we've bought like over sixty to eighty of those, uh, dividers in some of the Cosmo shops and, and some of maybe the culinary area that we're doing it. Where, where also when, eh, there's some purchase orders that are, there's some items that are back ordered that we're waiting for some to come in. Uh, but we're in real good, we're in real good shape. Um, and, um, we feel, we, I have plenty of hand sanitizer available. I have hand wipes available. And, uh, as we start, things go, go down, um, we start ordering. We, we have in place, uh, they just landed the last couple of days, touchless, um, hand sanitizers. You'll see them as you exit and enter the building, portable sanitizers. I have five of them and I have ten more on order. And we're gonna be able to use a half a dozen of them for, um, our athletes, our student athletes at the sites where they're at. Um, and then we're gonna use four more around the building. So we'll have a total of about ten around the building. And then we have refills to go there, so it's a touchless.
In addition to all the other hand sanitizers that we have within each classroom.
We, we have all the tools to work with right now. Thank you. And, and, and I thank you, you people for allowing, to giving us those tools.
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Knight.
Hey, hey, Mark, Mr. Byrne, I have a, a question. Mr. Bahu, I'm calling a little late.
Yeah.
How about the shops like electrical or carpentry? I heard you mentioning Cosmo and stuff like that. Um, are, are they dividers or are we just sort of spacing everybody six feet apart?
I, I think in.
Um, and what are we doing about the, about the tools? Um, um, I, I, I guess the kids probably can't be sharing anything, that's correct? Is that correct?
No, they're not sharing.
They're not sharing and, 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 um, we have in each shop, um, I don't know if you heard, Fred, but each, each teacher got, um, a, a kit. And their kit, um, consisted of five hundred wipes, so it's like a tub of wipes. So, um, I'm assuming based on the safety protocols, they're probably wiping their tools down as they use them. Um, and as far as dividers within shops, there is some shops that have them. Um, I think that if some shops need them and they call for them, um, I think we're, we're, we're in, in, in a position to give them.
So, so Mr. Bahu is based on the teacher and cluster chair request, whether or not they, uh, wanted the dividers or needed them to be able to properly distance the students?
Can I answer your question, Mr. Bahu?
So this is gonna be something that you watch, yeah, so this is gonna be something that you watch basically daily or weekly and make sure if they're seated, we'll go ahead and offer that. Like, let's just say, uh, our electrical teacher says, hey, listen, I, I, I would rather have those dividers, even though the cluster chair didn't come up to you. I'm sure he would speak to his cluster chair and the cluster chair would put in that request. Is that how that would work?
And that would depend on if it would meet code to have those dividers in electrical. We would have to make sure it met, met code to have them in a shop that it could be hazardous.
Good point.
The fire depart-
So that's how it's, eh, eh, is that?
The fire department has came through and did our. The fire department has came through, uh, Mr. Bahu and, and has done our walkthroughs with the building department. And they, they gave us clearance, um.
On what we had right now.
On what we had available to this point in time. Um, they also, we've also got a permit for, um, storage for, uh, our, um, hand sanitizers. So, because we have more than, uh, more than our share of hand sanitizer available that, and we have it locked in a, um, a fireproof cabinet. And so as we need it, we pu- we pull some of it out. So, uh, we, we're partnership and, and working with all the codes with the building department.
And the fire department.
The fire department and the building department, we, we're, we're meeting all the codes. So eh, eh, we would run that by them if someone needed it. But right now, I think we've been, uh, real supportive of any of the.
Approved for what we have.
Eh, eh, any of the shops, uh, whatever they need, and they're doing full six, uh, the six foot distancing, uh, and, and that has been very, um, important. And that message has got across from the administrators and constant, all kinds of meetings, uh, safety meetings during the ten day period that we had here before students came back into school.
That answer your question, Mr. Bahu?
Okay, thank you for that. Thank you for that.
Yeah. Any further questions?
Yeah, um. I, I'd like to say that, um, I had asked the superintendent a week or ten days ago if, if she would mind if I came by on opening day just to observe and not be a hindrance. Uh, she said she didn't have a problem with that as long as I adhered to, you know, signing in this and that and my mask and that. And, uh, I didn't want to get in anybody's way, but my observations were, uh, very keen to the point that a lot that was said was adhered to. Uh, I actually held the door open for quite a bit as the students wouldn't come in, but they would, you know, they'd be social distancing. Uh, the only glitches I heard in, in, uh, conversation with a couple of, of the clusters as well as, uh, Mr. Costa and, and Mike were, uh, minimal. Uh, a bus situation where there was a root or a Chromebook or a student came the wrong day, but those are, those are the things, we're ahead of the curve here. Um, I, I think you guys did an excellent job. Um, just, just in the couple hours I was here, I was pretty happy with what I seen. It looked very good operation, you know, and you got a better feel for it with only five hundred students versus a couple of thousand all over the building. Uh, I've been here on opening days before or during classes, uh, it can be quite tight, but we've got a great building. We don't have to tell anybody that, I'm sure. With what's going on in the Commonwealth, there was a lot of people envious of what we have, uh, let alone having a nice seventy-five acre campus. But, uh, everyone's on top of their game. I, I liked what I saw and I, I told the superintendent that. I, I thought everyone did a good job.
Thank you.
So, that's all I had.
Mr. Burns, is there anything else that the school committee could do to help you, um, in any way, form or fashion? I just had a thought just sitting here myself, is you mentioned holding the doors. Is that something we should open up so the doors stay open, especially early in the morning or for the classrooms?
So we already got the doors open, yeah?
We already do that, we're doing that now.
So you had a good job then?
Yeah, eh, eh, I, I liked it, you know, the, thank you, holding it, the, the students were very cordial and, eh, you know, the, uh, cluster chair thanked me for helping out and I didn't mind. I was here for that, whatever I could do. I just didn't want to get in the way, you know, or be a bore or what's he doing here? Or, you know, I just wanted to deserve and I thought it went down very well.
You're always welcome, Mr.
Don't tell him that. Go ahead, you all say.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Mr. Byrne. You and your team.
Uh, the next, uh, item, I'm sorry, I'm gonna just remove this. The next item on the agenda is, uh, temperature checks. So during the last meeting, I was asked to provide some additional information regarding temperature checks. Uh, first off, I'd like to talk a little bit about feasibility. So, uh, with the assistance of Mr. Knight, our business manager, we looked into some, uh, portable temperature check machines. And the, the cost is about three thousand dollars. Uh, we would need about five to cover our entry points, uh, so that would be about fifteen thousand dollars. In addition, we would need, uh, trained staff to provide these health services, uh, to get not only trained in how to use the machine, but how to probably use PPE, the verification of the results, uh, proper cleaning of the equipment, and then following our health and safety protocols if someone were to be detected, uh, with a temperature. Uh, in addition, currently, again, I know, uh, we discussed this last time, but very briefly, so I just want to discuss it a little bit further. The CDC and the American College of Pediatrics, as well as the Department of Education, the law health department, our school physician, uh, are, are not in favor of temperature checks, uh, for many reasons, uh, some of which I'll talk a little bit more about. Uh, there are many studies that suggest that sixteen percent of the, of the students or, or children do not develop symptoms. This means that even if we did temperature checks, there could be students who are, who are infected that, that would not be identified. Therefore, temperature checks would not prevent all individuals with COVID-19 from entering the building. Fever is common in many, many other illnesses and just because they were detected with a temperature doesn't necessarily mean they would have COVID. Uh, there's also, temperatures can be taken improperly and falsely interpreted as false positives, as a fever, meaning being a false positive. And lastly, uh, temperature checks could create a stigma for, for our students who are identified as having a fever regardless of whether they have COVID nineteen or not. Uh, in addition, I also reached out to superintendents, uh, across the state using the superintendent listserv with a question on it. I received over a hundred responses and none of the schools are conducting temperature checks, including those in our sending communities. Uh, lastly, uh, I, I guess most importantly is, uh, I believe that we, what we are currently doing by asking our families and our caregivers and our staff, as well as our students, to check themselves for symptoms each morning is critical. Uh, that is what all the guidelines are suggesting. Uh, we have provided our, our, our families and our staff with these checklists. They're posted on our website as well. In addition, we're asking our staff and our bus drivers and our administrators, everyone in our building currently, that throughout the school day, if they see someone exhibiting these symptoms, that they should immediately report that to the nurse. Uh, and those are the current, uh, those are the current guidelines that we have. And that's my update in regards to temperature checks at Great Ol' Technical High School.
Any questions?
Okay. Questions?
Next, uh, I'd like to, uh, ask the interim assistant superintendent principal, uh, Mr. Barton, to come up to review our current twenty-twenty-one, uh, student handbook for approval.
So, uh, the changes to the student handbook are in three major areas other than the particular changes that would include dates, um, that would normally change because of the calendar, uh, changes in regard to, um, changes in the membership of the school committee. But the three major changes are, are as follows. Um, number one, the twenty-twenty Great Ol' Technical High School fall reopening plan that we developed specifically because of the COVID pandemic, we decided to insert that into the student handbook. Uh, the reason for that are really two reasons. Uh, number one, if we were to pull out the reopening plan and insert it into different parts of the student handbook, I think it would be confusing for people. Uh, we decided, the superintendent and I, decided that if we were to insert the reopening plan in conjunction with the student handbook, people could reference both documents. Um, so that decision was made. Um, number two, uh, the other major change that's in the student handbook is for unexcused absences for students. We included, um, I believe at the recommendation of the committee, um, technical licensure-related exams, military and union visits. Uh, thirdly, the biggest change and, and I think the part that takes up the most, uh, text in the student handbook is, are the federal changes in Title IX and sexual harassment. So, um, in discussing this with Kathy Tierney, the Human Resources Director, and Tracy Anconacio, the Director of School Counseling and the Title IX Coordinator, I can give you some, um, of the key points and details that are in the Title IX changes. Um, and I can also give you some of the information on harassment and non-discrimination. Um, so first of all, um, the Director of Human Resources is the person in which, um, collects and is the, uh, officer in charge of, um, employee and sexual harassment, um, complaints. Or, and then the Tracy Anconacio, the Director of School Counseling, Title IX Coordinator is the one who would take care of student, student complaints. Um, the plan and, and the text that's included includes the definition and examples of sexual harassment in an educational context. So it gives some examples of things that occur or could occur in a school setting. Uh, it defines how a complainant, a person who feels that, um, they have been a, um, target of sexual harassment, may indicate that they feel, uh, sexual harassment has been alleged. It outlines how and to whom they can report that sexual harassment. Um, and it gives a mechanism on how to, um, document it. It also describes the requirement for submitting a formal complaint. It describes how a written notice and needs to be submitted to both parties, meaning the, um, two people that were, would be involved or responded and the complainant. It talks, uh, some dis- it gives some information on, um, the possibility that you could, um, have an informal resolution rather than going forward with a specific complaint or documented complaint. Um, it gives the opportunity and it gives a description on how to resolve things informally. And then of course, it gives, uh, some description on how records should be kept, a timeline, as well as training requirements for, uh, the Title IX Coordinator. It also describes an appeals process and the process for if someone were to do an external grievance procedure where they would contact the Office for Civil Rights in Boston, uh, Massachusetts Commission for Against Discrimination and the Equal Employment Opportunities Commission. Um, the harassment and non-discrimination policy describes certainly the purpose of it, the policy. It defines discrimination and harassment and it gives a step-by-step, uh, process again to informally resolve, um, allegations or complaints. And then of course, it gives the formal process. And then it describes any disciplinary action that would be, uh, instituted, um, as well as, um, description if there's any conflict of interest when one would be investigating something of that nature. And then it also offers, um, some state and federal remedies if someone wanted to pursue it beyond the scope of the school district. So, uh, that in summary is what is included in the student handbook.
Question?
Thank you. Motion approved?
Second.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mike.
Mr. Gigi?
Yes.
Mr. Getchir?
Yes.
Mr. Sheen?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Mr. Bahu? Mr. Bahu?
Mr. Oheer?
Yeah.
Yes.
Mr. Tatzias?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Morin?
Yes.
Uh, thank you, that's the end of my report for this evening.
Uh, I need a motion to approve the student handbook. Oh, we did that, okay. Report of the business manager. Hot seat.
Hey, good evening. I have one item on the agenda tonight and it is declaring, um, forty-four older computer tables that we have up here on the, or on the third floor in classrooms as surplus as we've, we're going to be replacing them with desks. Um, the computer tables were used back when these classrooms were actually using desktop computers rather than Chromebooks, so they had wire management. Um, they appear to be from the seventies or eighties, even though I'm not an expert, so they're showing age at this point. Um, and I don't anticipate they'll have much value, but we will follow the disposal process off to them, the communities that, um, send to the school and fund the school, um, and see if they're interested before moving to, uh, an online auction or disposal.
Motion approved?
Second.
Mr. Gigi?
Yes.
Mr. Getchir?
Yes.
Mr. Sheen?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Mr. Bahu?
Mr. Oheer?
Yeah.
Mr. Tatzias?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Morin?
Yes. Thank you.
That's all I have tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Old business, new business. Committing men motions. Report of subcommittees. Uh, I will need a mo- motion to enter executive session.
Are we gonna adjourn right from executive session or we're gonna come back and adjourn?
We're gonna come back.
Come back.
Okay.
Okay.
Motion? Make the motion to go on executive session.
Okay. Second.
Mr. Gigi?
Yes.
Mr. Getchir?
Yes.
Mr. Sheen?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Oheer?
Yes.
Mr. Tatzias? Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Morin?
Yes.
Chairman, uh, did you?
Call for a. Call for a five minute recess. The meeting is back in session, I need a roll call.
Mr. Gigi?
Yes.
Mr. Getchia?
Yes.
Mr. Sheen?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Here.
Mr. O'Hea?
Yeah.
Yes.
Mr. Tatzias?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes, here.
Mr. Morin?
Yeah. Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Second.
Mr. Gigi?
Yes.
Mr. Getchia?
Yes.
Mr. Sheen?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hea?
Yes.
Mr. Tatzias? Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Morin?
Yes. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.